The June 6, 2023, meeting of the Anorond County Council is now in session. Today is Amendment Day. We are here to consider amendments to proposed FY24 budget. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And I will transition over to Madam Vice Chair for invocation.
Good morning, everyone. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community. May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us? May we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing no lights. May have a motion at the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes, constitutes a reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second.
Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Bill Number 2623.
Bill Number 2623, An ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anorond County.
Right. Any discussion? Did you want to say anything, Mr. Trumbauer? Before we... Awesome. All right. So there are, the Madam Auditor actually had a number of cuts, or a number of, some analysis that she had performed over the last few weeks. And part of that process, or the outcome of that process, were a block of amendments that existed that, not only that she agreed was adequate, but the administration also agreed that they were adequate cuts in support of those. And so, we now, what I'll do is ask for a motion, if everyone is okay with this, a motion to vote on those block, that block of 49, as a block. And so, if anyone objects to this, just let me know. But I can have a motion to vote on blocks, amendments number 1 through 49, as a block.
So moved.
Second, Hummer.
All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to vote on amendment numbers 1 through 49 as a block has been adopted.
And if anyone wanted any clarity, I believe the thicker packet was the, had all of the amendments in there as well. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 50.
I think I should read amendments 1 through 49 first, as much as I really would like to avoid that part of it. It is probably required.
I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm going to begin with Amendment Number 1. Amendment Number 1, reduces contractual services by $40,000 for fuel oil based on expenditure history plus inflation, weather volatility. Reduces supplies and materials by $30,000 for equipment repair to align the budget to the highest fiscal year expenditures. Amendment Number 2, reduces personal services by $530,000 for salaries and wages, $365,000, to omit funds erroneously included in the calculation pension, $165,000, to be consistent with the latest actuarial report recommendations. Amendment Number 3, reduces personal services by $25,000 for contractual pay to remove budgeted funds for a land use graphic designer. Amendment Number 4, reduces personal services by $50,000 for turnover based on historic turnover and increased number of vacancies. Amendment Number 5, reduces personal services by $160,000 for contractual pay to correct overage errors in the budget calculations. Amendment Number 6, reduces personal services by $170,000 for contractual pay based on historical expenditures and failing to substantiate the full budget request. Amendment Number 7, reduces contractual services by $30,000 for data processing software, $5,000, to eliminate background software already budgeted within the Office of Information Technology and Medical Services, $25,000, to align with historical trends. Amendment Number 8, reduces personal services by $210,000 for turnover based on historical turnover and increased number of vacancies. Amendment Number 9, reduces grants, contributions, and other by $2,680,000 for inter-fund reimbursement to recognize a cut in the self-insurance fund. Reduces contractual services by $900,000 for lease rate replacement to recognize the cut in the garage vehicle replacement fund. Amendment Number 10, reduces capital outlay by $900,000 for automotive equipment based on vehicles already replaced and a vehicle deemed a duplicate. Amendment Number 11, reduces contractual services by $3,660,000 for SIF workers compensation, $3,475,000. CIF general liability, $50,000, and CIF automobile liability, $135,000, to correct a calculation error of the annual liabilities in the self-insurance fund. Amendment Number 12, reduces contractual services by $125,000 for consultants based on expenditure history. Amendment Number 13, reduces personal services by $300,000 for turnover based on historic turnover and increased number of vacancies. Reduces grants, contributions, and other by $90,000 to correct the contribution to the self-insurance fund. Amendment Number 14, capital budget, deletes FY24 bonds of $1,029,100, reduces FY24 PGO by $770,900. Amendment Number 15, prior council approval, reduces prior approved public safety impact fees by $120,000. Amendment Number 16, prior council approval, reduces prior approved PGO by $215,000. Amendment Number 17, capital budget, deletes $1,392,000 of FY24 bonds. Amendment Number 18, prior council approval, reduces prior approved bonds by $340,000. Amendment Number 19, capital budget, reduces FY24 general county bonds by $150,000. Amendment Number 20, capital budget, corrects name and reduces FY24 highway impact fees District 2 by $75,000. Amendment Number 21, capital budget, reduces FY24 highway impact fees District 1 by $395,000. Amendment Number 22, capital program, reduces FY25 highway impact fees District 4 by $185,000. Amendment Number 23, capital budget, reduces FY24 bonds by $65,000. Amendment Number 24, prior council approval, reduces prior approved highway impact fees District 2 by $370,000. Halfway there. Amendment Number 25, capital budget, reduces FY24 bonds by $75,000. Amendment Number 26, capital program, reduces FY25, FY26, FY27, FY28, and FY29 bonds by $75,000 each year. Amendment Number 27, capital budget, reduces FY24 bonds by $225,000 and adds FY24 education impact fees District 5 by $225,000. Amendment Number 28, capital budget, reduces FY24 general county bonds by $900,000 and increases FY24 education impact fees District 6 by $900,000. Amendment Number 29, prior council approval, reduces prior approved education impact fees District 1 by $1,950,000. Amendment Number 30, capital budget, reduces FY24 PGO by $125,000. Amendment Number 31, capital program, reduces FY25 bonds by $1,260,000 and FY26 bonds by Amendment Number 32, capital program, reduces FY28 bonds by $845,000. Amendment Number 33, capital budget, reduces FY24 water bonds by $250,000. Amendment Number 34, capital budget, reduces FY24 water bonds by $600,000. Amendment Number 35, capital program, reduces FY25, FY26, FY27, and FY28 water bonds by $600,000 each year. Amendment Number 36, capital budget, deletes $129,000 of FY24 water bonds. Amendment Number 37, capital program, adds $129,000 of FY25 water bonds. Amendment Number 38, capital program, deletes FY25 water bonds by $5,143,000 and adds $5,143,000 of FY26 water bonds. Amendment Number 39, prior council approval, reduces prior approved water bonds by $2 million. Amendment Number 40, prior council approval, reduces prior approved water bonds by $50,000. Amendment Number 41, capital program, reduces FY28 solid waste bonds by $32,000 and FY29 solid waste bonds by $332,000. Amendment Number 42, prior council approval, reduces prior approved wastewater bonds by $2,670,000. Amendment Number 43, capital budget, deletes $6,006,000 of FY24 wastewater bonds. Amendment Number 44, capital program, reduces FY25 wastewater bonds by $190,000. Amendment Number 45, capital budget, reduces FY24 WPRF bonds by $255,000. Amendment Number 46, prior council approval, reduces prior approved wastewater PGO by $500,000. Amendment Number 47, capital program, adds FY25 wastewater PGO by $500,000. Amendment Number 48, reduces grants, contributions, and other by $20,000 to correct the contribution to the self-insurance fund. And finally, Amendment Number 49, reduces fixed charges by $1,360,000 to correct the contribution to the self-insurance fund.
Wow, okay. Is there any additional discussion?
Thank you. I just have one question. This is probably for both the Budget Officer and the Auditor. These are the exact same cuts that were the agreed-upon cuts that we discussed last week. Is that correct?
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. And there were some tweaks to kind of identify exactly what was agreed upon because there were some choices in the rebuttal, but I think the amounts on the amendments listed, everyone agrees was the intent, but we didn't agree.
Okay, I think we're on the same page.
Thank you. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, yes. So, we spent the past several days working with the Auditor's Office to make sure everyone's numbers matched. But in principle, yes, this is the output of what we agreed to in the rebuttal last week. It's now got real numbers behind it. And as I said, we are on the same page after many phone calls and conversations over the last 24 hours. I will further mention, if I might, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So, the administration supports these amendments 1 through 49. This is where we concur. We've also reached out to Board of Ed, and I'm sure Mr. Stansky is nodding behind me, but they also support these. So, this would, this would allow the council to have approximately $5.2 million on the operating recurring side. On the capital side, I don't have the exact numbers, but this is the funding that would be available for us to introduce our supplemental budget amendments tomorrow, which we've had many discussions with you all. This pays for all of that. So, what the council has requested, you now have the funding to do that. And we would say, at this point, we're good, but you can entertain other amendments if you want. But we support these 1 through 49.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council members? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendments, block amendments Number 1 through 49.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Numbers 1 through 49 have been adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 50.
Amendment Number 50, reduces personal services by $135,000 for turnover based on historic turnover and increased number of vacancies.
All right, Ms. Ledbetter.
This is an amendment to adopt the full cuts that were recommended by Madam Auditor in the Auditor's Review, based on her recommendations.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. This is one of those where during the rebuttal day, we agreed to a partial cut based on the Auditor's recommendation. I think we ended up with $50,000 turnover cut, which I believe you just passed, so this would be in addition to that. We, we don't support this. We would ask the council to reject it. We think that the Department of Aging and Disabilities doesn't, we don't want to take any more of turnover. We don't want to affect their operations. I would ask you guys to reject this cut. And as I mentioned before, I don't, I don't think this, this funding would be needed for anything else, so I'd, I'd say it's a policy cut.
And Madam Auditor, these numbers were, is pretty accurate from what, did anything change over the last week, week and a half, when you and the Budget Officer, I guess, sat down and, because you tweaked numbers on the previous 1 through 49? So, did any numbers change on this during that assessment?
No. Michelle Bowler, County Auditor, no new information was provided.
Check.
So, the presentation that we made a week ago, the information is blocked.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Volkey.
Yep. Madam Auditor, again, you're on the hot seat, sorry. So, this was a recommended cut that you made after your review, and just, can you walk me through briefly? You still think this is a good cut? And why?
Sure. So, I can go through the details as we get into percentages, but we try to apply a consistent methodology for turnover. Look at all, all of the departments based on what we're seeing. So, the Department of Aging turnover budget request for this year, up until the $50,000 cut that just went through, was 3.98%, approximately 4%. And the approved budgeted turnover in FY23 was 5.4%. However, actual turnover for FY23 is estimated at 14%. And four of the 68 positions were vacant as of May 10, 2020. And during the review of the budget the year before, there were only two vacant positions. So, our recommendation is based on the additional vacancies from the prior fiscal year and the actual turnover rates that we're seeing. So, we recommended that the turnover proposed budget increase by $135,000, and that brings it to approximately 5.5% as the, that's the lowest historic actual turnover rate during the past three. And they have ranged from 5.5 to 9.7.
Can I follow up?
Please.
Thank you. So, just understanding that, and knowing that you asked for this cut, have you heard anything from Aging about their position on this cut? I haven't, but that's why I'm asking, have you?
Just through the Budget Office in the rebuttal. So, I think you guys have all of the information that I received.
Same as you have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yep, please.
Thank you, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So, again, this is, this is one of the few that we just didn't come to an exact concurrence with the Auditor's Office. They did their analysis, we did ours. I mean, their numbers, right? So, I would just add that they only have two vacancies in the whole department, and they've also recently hired two new positions. So, we feel that the $50,000 cut was more appropriate, and we are willing to concur with that, obviously, and you just passed it. And again, as I said before, we think taking any additional could impact departmental operations, which I'm sure nobody wants to do. But this is, this is one where we're pushing back on a further cut.
Any additional, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 50.
We, I think we need a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And actually, before we do that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I jump in with one last question?
Please, please.
Thank you. This is really a question for the sponsor. Did you have any particular thing that you were hoping to use these cut funds for?
Nothing in particular.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Ledbetter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 50.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 50 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call, stumbling over here. Please read Amendment Number 51.
Amendment Number 51, reduces contractual services by $15,000 for fuel oil to be consistent with the Department of Central Services' fuel oil cost estimation approach.
Okay, and Ms. Ledbetter.
Again, this is one of the cuts that was recommended by Madam Auditor in her review. Being consistent across departments is just something that is easy for me to get behind and ask for your support.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Ledbetter, so moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we did agree to a fuel oil cut in Central Services. They have a much bigger line item for that, obviously. I take the sponsor at her word, this is a kind of proportional corresponding cut to another department. The reality is, I mean, it's $15,000. We looked at this again after the auditor made her recommendation, and we agree, there's probably a little room there. We could have taken half of that and felt comfortable. But for a large department like Wreckin' Parks, and they own a lot of buildings, and they operate a lot of buildings, I, I ask whether the juice is worth the squeeze on this one. I mean, $15,000, that, that might be needed, maybe, maybe it's not, but why, why risk it when fuel oil has skyrocketed over recent months and, and over the last year or so? I don't, I don't think this would be a wise cut, but I leave it in the council's hands.
All right. And I want to go back to Madam Auditor.
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor, as the Councilwoman, Ledbetter indicated, this recommendation was to keep the calculation or estimate consistent with office of central services.
Check. Any additional comments? All right, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 51.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment Number 51 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 52.
Amendment Number 52, reduces personal services by $329,400 for costs associated based on eliminating, eliminating two new positions from management and control, $171,300,000, and two positions from equity and human rights, $158,100, I actually can't say numbers this morning, $158,100, reduces contractual services by $1,100 based on the elimination of the two new positions from management and control related to computers and phones.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairs. The summary is pretty self-explanatory. We can go into the details in discussions. A motion to adopt.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, unsurprisingly, the administration would ask you to reject this amendment. These are two new positions. The county executive mentioned them in his budget address. I think this is part of the administration's plan over the second term, to kind of build out these areas. We don't feel there's any need to eliminate these positions at this point, so we would ask you to reject this amendment and let these folks be hired and let, let them come on and do the good work that the administration has planned for them.
Check.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, when looking at the budget, obviously, there's priorities. The major priority and the large portion of our budget is education. And for me, that's really being steered in, in most part by blueprint. So then, the second priority for me, and I think some of my colleagues, is public safety. So, I thought, you know, how can, how can we get another officer, another firefighter? So, I started looking at the proportional growth in the county budget based on departments. Mr. Trumbauer, you sent something over at the very beginning, looking at the last 10 years of growth in fireplace and sheriff, fire, 30.5% growth, police, 14.5%, sheriff, 19.2%. I don't have numbers on detention, but they're part of that public safety pie. Looking at the CAO's growth in just the last few years, in 2019, there were two approved positions in the CAO budget. We are now at 17. That's an enormous percentage increase. Rough math, we're well over, I think, 500%. So, I thought, okay, here's an opportunity to say, yep, maybe we need these positions, but priority-wise, I think we need another officer, another firefighter more. And that's where I landed. So, let's, my comments, end.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to get the administration's final word here. So, this is, these two positions, it's the Equity and Human Rights position, and it's the lead for the 41 Community Place Nonprofit Center. So, these are both, obviously, new initiatives. I appreciate the sponsor's priority exercise versus police officers and firefighters, but I just, I just do want to say, over the past week or so, the administration has bent over backwards to find a way to accommodate the council requests to add more police and firefighters, which you will see in our supplemental budget tomorrow. So, I would again ask that you reject this amendment. These are important new positions for equity and human rights and the nonprofit sector that the administration feels very strongly about. So, I would ask the council to reject this amendment.
Madam Vice Chair. Oh, you turned it, you turned it off.
I sure did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. You know, a budget is the clearest reflection of, of our values, and I am thrilled with what we are able to do this year, both for education and public safety. And it's also exciting to know that we can round out some other initiatives in addition to that. So, being that these positions are not holding up our ability to shore up public safety or education, they are there to enhance what we are already trying to do with equity and inclusion in this county. I think I'm definitely a no on this amendment, and I would urge my colleagues to, to join me in that vote. Thank you.
Any additional, seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 52.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 52 has been defeated.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 53.
Amendment Number 53, reduces personal services by $223,200 for costs associated based on eliminating a new executive administrative secretary position, $78,400, and a new assistant to the county executive position, $144,800.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Summary, pretty self-explanatory. Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? All right. Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So, similar, similar to the last one, these are new positions, but instead of new initiatives, this is kind of the county executives restructuring a bit for the second term. So, this would be one, one of the positions is a new legislative assistant that would help interact with, with you all. The second one is a position that will come over from the law office and be some additional support there. So, this is in recognition of the county executive having one term under his belt and making some suggested moves to help facilitate the interactions of his, his office with government relations in particular. So, I think honestly that these two positions will be mutually beneficial for both the administration and the council.
Mr. Volkey.
I'm just going to note, as we talk about some of the conversations that some of us up here have had about rightsizing the legislative branch vis-à-vis the executive branch, if we keep throwing more positions in the executive branch, and we, you know, are doing two, three positions in the legislative, legislative branch, but we're doing two or three in positions in the legislative branch, but we're doing two or three in the executive branch, we're never going to right-size because they're always going to just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. So I think that this one is somewhat less, hopefully controversial, at least from a policy standpoint, than the last amendment. This is more just size of government, right? Are we going to give these additional resources to the fourth floor where they continue to have outsized disproportionate influence over policy and decisions and research and all these different things more than we have? So that's what this looks at. This is a saving certainly, but it's more about what we're saying with the sizes of different branches of government than anything else. And that's why I support this, and I would ask my colleagues to do the same.
Madam Vice Chair?
Keep doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate my colleague to my right here, but as the legislative branch, we have the ability to right-size our own branch of government. So I think that's not necessarily the best rationale for voting for or against this amendment, but, you know, however you want to walk in the world is fine.
Any additional comments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please read the... or call the roll on amendment number 53.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number 53 has been defeated.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 54.
Amendment number 54, Capital Program, deletes FY '25 Highway Impact Fees District 2 by $8,216,000 and adds $8,216,000 of FY '26 Highway Impact Fees District 2.
Mr. Volkey?
I've talked to DPW about what if any impacts this would have on the project. My understanding is it would not have any impacts on the project. The timeline remains the same, but quite honestly, they can't use the money in FY '25. They think at best they're going to be at FY '26, and what they indicated is if we find that we need the money in FY '25, then when we come back in the budget next year, we can always accelerate it back up and move it again. So having had these conversations, having heard the concerns of the communities on both sides, this seems to me to be a reasonable compromise. It preserves the funds that are already appropriated. It preserves the funds that are in this year's budget for land acquisition if those opportunities come up. The design work will happen likely later this year, so in FY '24, and they have the funds for that. They have the funds for land acquisition. This simply moves the construction funds out one year, where we now keep the project on track, and it does not impact timeline. So with that, I'd ask for my colleague's support. I will note, because Madam Vice Chair noted this to me, this project sits on the edge of our districts, right? So I have the vast majority of it. I have one full community and half of another community that are impacted by this, and I believe Madam Vice Chair has the other side of the street. So she may have some thoughts on it too, but as this does, in my opinion, sit largely in my district, I would ask for my colleague's consideration on that. Thank you.
Is there motion to adopt? Second?
Second.
Mr. Trumbull?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I'm at a bit of a disadvantage. I have not seen this amendment. So I would ask for a minute or two to read it, talk with my colleague, the Director of DPW, behind me, and I will get back to you as soon as possible.
Did Madam Vice Chair want to say anything, or you wanted to... Listen. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we have some late-breaking news. The administration can live with this, according to the DPW Director. It's just to confirm, this is a deferral from '25 to '26. Okay. And I'm sure you're going to use your leadership position to find consensus for this project in that community in the meantime.
Always working on it, man.
Fantastic.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, when getting amendments this late, it is hard, so I appreciate the conference between DPW and Mr. Budget Director. This project has been long, long, long in the process, so as long as we are moving towards getting it accomplished, the pedestrian thoroughfare there at Jumper's Hole and Mountain Road is quite dangerous, and I know community members are eager to see these improvements made, so I just hope that we can keep this project moving towards completion. I'll trust my colleague to stand by his word and work with the community to get to consensus. We'll see if we're back here next year. If we're back here next year pushing this again, it's a definite no. Got it?
I think I'm going to find my place in the document here. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 54.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Reluctantly, but aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
And just for clarity, I'm a big fan of, you know, councilmatic courtesy. There are a lot of projects that happen in various districts that are, for the most part, isolated to those legislators that operate in that district. And so if one of the other council members had a project that they either wanted to, you know, speed up or delay, nine times out of 10, I'm going to be a yes on that. And so even with this, it's a yes, aye, for me, for this particular amendment.
That is seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 54 has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 55.
Amendment number 55, Capital Program, reduces FY '25 bonds by $210,000, reduces FY ' '26 bonds by $1,788... I'm having a lot of problems with the places here. It's $1,078. Deletes FY '26 Highway Impact Fees District 1 of $1,250,000. Deletes FY '26 Other State Grants of $3,283,000. Adds FY '27 Bonds of $1,288,000. Adds FY '27 Highway Impact Fees District 1 of $1,250,000. Adds FY '27 Other State Grants of $3,283,000.
So this amendment, just like the previous one, is a project that is, in this case, this is holistically in District 1, had meetings with about seven or eight different organizations, homeowners association, community associations up there, who are all on the same page. And so what this does essentially shifts that capital funding from '25 and '26, or yes, one year to the right. So it doesn't eliminate anything. It leaves the money in there for planning for this year to continue that process, but it adds a year gap in there so that the communities can come to consensus, as well as try to figure out a different alternative path for this particular project. This is the Baybrook BWI Trail Extension. The portion that is really being impacted is the Phase 2. There are two phases in there, and this is the Phase 2 portion of that that's along one of the roads that's in discussion with the community as far as whether or not that extended or expanded trail should be along that path. And so this will just give me that additional year to reach consensus with the community and let them know that their voices are being heard. I mean, that's why we are here, and if there is 100% agreement between all the associations, for me, it's simple. So that's why I propose this amendment. So motion to adopt? Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank the sponsor for sharing the amendment in advance.
So while this amendment was not as... I have been very vocal about this topic since day one. Everyone I've communicated with said the Baybrook Alliance or the Baybrook Trail Connector, I am 100% targeting since we've adopted the budget. So it has not been a secret about where I felt on this project.
I was legitimately thanking you. That was a dig at my pink-tied twin over there for not sharing the previous one.
And for the record, I made the motion to adopt, and I think you seconded it. Is that what that was? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, so because you did approach us about this, we took the time to circle back with DPW and Office of Transportation, and we can agree to this amendment. As you stated, this will essentially defer Phase 2 by one year. We certainly want community consensus, so the administration and the departments look forward to working with you to get that going forward. Our primary concern was we didn't want to jeopardize the additional funding coming in from state and federal grants.
Correct.
So we believe this does not jeopardize that. It does keep the design on track, so we have no opposition to this amendment.
Check. Any additional... seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 55.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 55 has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 3623.
Bill number 3623, An Ordnance Concerning Public Work: Solid Waste Collection, Solid Waste Service Charge.
And just... did you need a break? Is there any data that needs to be sort of recalibrated? Are we good at this point? Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 1.
Amendment number 1. This amendment requires the county auditor to review the information used to support an increase in the solid waste service charge in excess of 5% and requires the county executive to provide the county auditor certain information.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to just acknowledge that this was a last-minute share with the administration, certainly not my intent to surprise you. Part of legislative process, sometimes things come together in the final hour, and that this is a result of that process. But this comes from conversations with constituents in my district. The solid waste charge is one of the fees within our structure, our tax structure or fee structure, that is regressive in nature, and there were some concerns about not understanding from the constituent side the process that is taken to review that these proposed rate increases. And so the purpose of this amendment is to bring that process out into the light so that the taxpayers and residents in our county understand that the auditor is looking closely at and doing a third-party review, the end goal being to hope to build transparency and cooperation between the legislative branch and between the department so that we can all be on the same page when we're discussing these rate increases in the future to make sure that it's really understood in detail. Thank you. Why and, you know, what is going into these rate increases? That last, the second part of the amendment where it mentions the least 45 days, that was born out of conversations with Madam Auditor the past, really, I think, like 24 hours or so, where it was brought to my attention, it's a heavy lift. The audit of the budget is a very, very heavy lift, very time-consuming, and that time, there's only so many hours in a day, days in the week. And in order to help facilitate a deeper dive into the data that is used, she mentioned that it would be helpful to have that information ahead of time. Doesn't mean that that data is available necessarily to the council ahead of time. It's just it's to the auditor's office for that review to help facilitate that. But motion to adopt.
Mr. Trumbull?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So we did get this amendment earlier this morning. I was able to speak with the auditor about it. I didn't have a chance to connect with the sponsor before, but I would ask the council to do one of two things here. My preference would be that the mover of the amendment and the second would withdraw, and you would withdraw this amendment, or if you want to vote on it, I would ask you to reject it, and here's why. We can't do this. We don't have the rate set 45 days before May 1st, so we just physically cannot comply with this amendment. But what I would offer, and after my conversation this morning with the auditor, we can commit, and we can do an MOU with the auditor's office or whatever you guys want, we can commit to sharing our support documentation for utility rates with the auditor's office two weeks ahead of May 1st. That's pretty much when we make the final decision. So we will give the auditors that information, give them a two-week head start so they can do their background. But just to be clear, all that support is provided on May 1st on the timetable of the budget. So my understanding, the intent of this is to give their team a little bit more time. I understand, and we will do everything we can to support that. So if the council were to withdraw this amendment, I would work with the auditor to come up with an MOU or an agreement where our team and DPW would share support with the auditor's office, you know, confidentially ahead of May 1st. We can do that up to two weeks ahead of time. So if that sounds like something you'd be interested in, I think we can get there.
Can... I do have a question. So when you say you can't physically do it on March, let's just say 15th, because it's 45 days?
Because I don't know what the rate is at that point.
When is the rate released, or when is that...
So we have... so our internal budget timeline for operating and utility funds basically starts in December, and it goes all the way through for departmental review and budget office review, and then the county executive starts making final decisions in March and into early April. So by March 15th, we haven't even... he hasn't even set the rate. We haven't even presented to him yet what the rates could be. So I'm just saying, we can't meet that 45-day deadline. But we are willing to acknowledge the intent, and we would be willing to share our utility rate documentation 14 days in advance, and we can do that without a bill. I'll sign a document, Michelle can sign it, and we'll agree, or we could codify it later, but I'm just telling you, we can't meet this amendment.
Madam Auditor, can I... do you believe that as well? Just curious what your opinion is on that? On as far as the utility rate timeline historically that have come in? I'm just curious what your opinion is on that, 45 days or two weeks?
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. We don't have insight into the timeline on the county executive making the decisions on the budget. It wasn't intended, you know, a recommendation for additional time isn't obviously to be before it's available, but any time ahead of May 1st, there's so many pieces that are included, so a deeper dive into the rates, if it can happen prior to May 1st, it gives us the ability to do that because we are already stretched with the growing budget and the about three and a half weeks timeline. So that was kind of the part of the discussion, but in terms of when those rates are developed or the different pieces in the process, we talk, I talk regularly with the budget office to make sure that anything that's done ahead of time, we can try to discuss sooner, but in terms of when those rate decisions are made, how that relates information coming to us.
Okay. I guess... Ms. Ledbetter?
If... so, and I appreciate the offer of the MOU, but I feel obligated to ask this next question as well. If this amendment were drafted in a way that it were to say on clause 2, at least two weeks before the announcement, would that make it possible to comply? Or is there a number of days? You know, 14 days, 10 days, 5 days?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, I mean, we could probably figure something out. I guess my question back to you would be, why don't you let us work this out outside of the code? If we don't, you can bring this back next year, but we're about to set the utility rates this year irregardless... or that's not a real word, regardless of what happens here. So this is really an issue for next year. So I would... could we work something out? Maybe, but again, I don't know what section Roman numeral 1 here really does. So like cleaning this up, maybe that would work, but my ask to you as Budget Officer is let us work this out for next year. If it's not to your satisfaction or the auditor's satisfaction, bring this back in advance of, you know, of next budget, and we'll codify it. Or the council can vote down the amendment. I mean, you have lots of options here. I'm just... I'm offering you what I thought was a win-win, so it's up to you guys.
May I ask a question, Madam Auditor?
No, please.
Sorry. It looked like you were in the middle of something. I didn't want to interrupt.
I've got a draft amendment.
Oh. Um, I would, Madam Auditor, do you feel that in MOU in this circumstance, you know, based on the discussions that you and I had about a need for a blue-letter type review, do you feel that MOU would suffice in accomplishing that, that goal?
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. I am very interested in a discussion about a broad MOU for budget, so I can absolutely have my support for a specific MOU related to these rates.
Right. Who needs to withdraw first?
Would be.
I'm happy to compromise on this. Ledbetter withdrawing Amendment Number One with the anticipation, happy anticipation of that MOU. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Love it. Love it when government works. All right. Say it again? Yeah, I'm seeing them. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 3723.
Bill Number 3723, Inordinance Concerning Public Works: Utilities, Metered Water and Wastewater Charges.
Please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment makes a technical correction to the tagline for Section 135805.
Mr. Trembauer?
As advertised, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Okay. Any additional discussion? All right, seen none. Please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title. I think there's 48 here. Yeah.
Bill Number 4223, Inordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Income Tax.
All right, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would remove the new rate for people who are over 400 or joint filers over 480. So it's pretty simple. Move amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Trembauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trembauer, Budget Office, I think we would simply oppose this. This is a signature part of the budget. I think we had a lot of discussion about this. I would also note, we held two, or you all held two budget town halls, and we actually had people come in support of this. I think maybe out of both nights, there was one or two people that testified in opposition to this. I think it's the county executive's, one of his signature efforts to make different brackets for different income levels, and we would ask you to reject.
All right. Any additional comments? Madam Secretary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please. I was just curious, two things. One, what would be the total cost of this amendment? And two, what corresponding cuts did you suggest, or would you suggest, to take with this amendment?
I think the cost is between 7 and 10 million. Is that right?
So the FY '24 cost would be approximately 6-ish million, and the overall annualized cost after three years would be about 14.4, if my recollection serves.
And if we pass it, I'll figure out the cuts. I mean, I'll be very blunt with you, right? It doesn't make any sense for me to put up multi-multi-million dollars' worth of cuts on 2623, only to then come in and have the rate not change, and then we've wasted everybody's time on the front end. I am smart enough to figure out where this is probably going, but I do think that this is important for me to at least stand up for people that I represent and say to them, you know, I tried to keep the rate where it was. I am certainly happy to find $14 million' worth of cuts in this budget. I can find them, but ultimately, I don't think they're going to pass, because I don't think there's consensus to do this anyway. But this is me standing up for the people that I represent and saying, I fought the fight that you asked me to fight.
Fair point. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask a similar question. Obviously, this is just more political posturing than actual real policy decision, because we are seeming to be in full support of supporting our school system and public safety even beyond what the original budget that was introduced. It clearly needs the revenue side unless we're going to pretend that we're Washington and go into default of our own budget. So obviously, I'm a no. Again, I'm going to keep pounding on, if you are looking to actually pass an amendment, it would be helpful to be able to consider it before, two minutes before it's handed to me on a piece of paper. I find it somewhat disrespectful.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go on the record. Mr. Trembauer mentioned the constituents who came out and spoke at certain budget town halls in support of this. I have heard overwhelming lack of support for this tax increase from the constituent in my district. As such, I would love to be added as a cosponsor to this if this is the proper time, because again, I do think it's important for me to be that voice for the people that I represent. And there has been overwhelming opposition to this, this tax increase within my district that I've heard, heard from. Thank you.
Any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll for Amendment Number One.
Just for the record too, I want to read the description. Amendment Number One. This amendment deletes the 3.2% income tax rate bracket. And on to the roll. Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number One has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4323.
Bill Number 4323, Inordinance Concerning Property Tax and Semi-Annual Payment Service Charge.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The summary is pretty on point. So, oh, yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Okay.
Amendment Number One. This amendment reduces the property tax rates to the rates established for the taxable year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023.
That's not much.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Trembauer?
Thank you, Chris Trembauer, Budget Officer. Oh, we oppose this.
Okay.
I mean, just, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, if I'm reading the amendment correctly, this is Amendment One, so it would, it would maintain the property taxes static as they are now in '23, correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's $45 million of revenue. So if this was to pass, we just wouldn't fund the Board of Ed. I mean, that's what, that's what this is, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Volkey.
We would fund the Board of Ed. We wouldn't fund the 50-plus million dollars, and it's about to be 53 when the supplemental comes down, that the Board of Ed is asking for over their appropriation last year, which is in excess of maintenance of effort. But we most certainly would fund the Board of Education to the tune of a billion dollars. I just want to be clear for anybody listening at home, this is not a, this is not going to gut the Board of Education. They will still have a lot of funding. But I want to add something personally on why I support this. So I put out on Facebook at the beginning of this budget season, what I asked was a petition for people in my district, and I targeted specifically to my district, and I said, let me know if you agree with these tax increases or not. So I heard Mr. Trembauer say, we haven't heard from many people who have indicated that they support, or that they are opposed, I should say, to these increases. I will tell you, I have. I got 608 submissions through that from my constituents. So that's more budget testimony than I think we've gotten on any budget that I've ever been involved in. I mean, that's just my district, right? I'm 1/7th of this county. That is where my constituents are with respect to a property tax increase. I specifically heard from a lot of people who are on fixed incomes, who were seniors, who are receiving social security disability. The challenge is, it's much easier politically for the administration to sell an income tax hike, right? Tax the rich. Let's go get them. Those 400,000, 480,000 people, we got to go after them. That is the way that the administration can easily sell that tax increase, right? But this is much harder, because a property tax increase cuts across the board. It is completely regressive. If you are concerned about the lower-end incomers, this property tax increase hits them right in the pocket. So this would keep rates where they were. I've heard from hundreds, 608 of my constituents, just through my own channel of getting submissions and information back. And that's not including the people who did show up to the budget town halls and express concern specifically about the property tax increase. If you read the news coverage, you would not have seen that, but if you were there at the budget town halls, you heard those people loud and clear, and they had a lot to say. So I would ask for you to consider that when we vote on this amendment. I have the next amendment coming too, which would keep us, I believe, at the property tax cap right about there, which is slightly different. But I would suggest that all my colleagues think about how this is going to impact taxpayers across the board, because this is not just something that hits high-end people. This hits everybody, hits them equally, and frankly, it hits them disproportionately at the lower end of the scale. Thank you.
Oh, wow. Look at all those lights. I love it. Oh, my God. They were all off, and then I turned to the right, they were all on. Real quick, so having done this, this process for a number of years now, I am, I am grateful that we are in the process, the policymaking process as legislators, and I'm an advocate of representation. And so while I may not necessarily agree with, with this particular cut, I am definitely a fan of people representing their districts and their constituents. And so I have zero issues when people put, legislators put up, whether it impacts, you know, it passes or not, I'm going to do my advocacy for the folks that I represent, and I sure as hell expect other legislators to do the same thing. And so I have no issues with, you know, council members proposing their, or sort of representing their views through legislation, because that's their, their, their policy views, and it's also their constituent views in some cases. So while I may not necessarily agree with this amendment, I do value and respect the fact that you have a constituency that you believe this impacts, and they, and you're representing their voice. And so I have no issue with that. And so I will, I don't know who came on first.
They went before me. Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Rodvian.
Sorry, I just wanted to add a few comments. The lower-income folks in our county are not going to be impacted by this, because a lot of them do not have regular housing, much less own a home. There may, they may be impacted by, you know, a property owner who has to pass on some of that taxes to their renters, but to say that this disproportionately impacts the poorest folks in our county is disingenuous, because they really don't own homes. That is a major issue for low-income folks in the county. And with respect to the, I don't know, ballpark of $50 million going to the Board of Ed, I believe that that is largely needed to work towards compliance with the Maryland's Blueprint for Public Education. And, you know, we could wait until everything comes due, you know, until the final deadlines for, for example, teacher salaries to be, you know, mandated by state law to be above 60,000, but I think that puts us in a very dangerous position down the road. So I think, you know, the incremental approach that this budget provides in terms of meeting those, those goals to be in compliance with the Maryland Blueprint within a few years from now, I think are very reasonable. And I certainly do not like the idea of hitting different economic classes against each other, and that's certainly not what this is about. But I also think, you know, if you are a property owner, if you are a high-income earner, you have benefited enormously from the folks in this county who are lower-income earners and who do not own property. And so to ask the property owners and high-income earners to bear a larger burden of our taxes, I think is a very reasonable and fair thing to do. And again, I, like Mr. Smith, I do respect, you know, you speaking on behalf of your constituents, and I understand that that's what you're doing, but I, for the reasons I just explained, I have to vote against this amendment.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up again on a comment that Mr. Volkey made about hearing from constituents. I too reached out to constituents within my district, asking a variety of questions about this particular budget. And I've heard back from 393 within 24 hours. 374 of those were opposed to the property tax increase. That's 95% of the folks who responded. That's a really strong statement. And then a follow-up question is, I did ask how, you know, these tax increases might, you know, affect them. 183 said that they would seriously consider moving out of the county as a result. Again, that's 46%. That's, that I think is a large number of folks who are feeling that the, the continued tax increases are really, you know, they're affecting their decision to want to live here, run their businesses here, be employed here, and be part of our county. And that, that concerns me. And so that, that's a large, it's a large portion of my decision to cosponsor this amendment with my colleagues. Again, it's, it's about representing the people who have, you know, who are in my district and the concerns that they're bringing to me.
Ms. Fiedler, did you? Okay. I was just working my way back this way. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So for me, I think this, this amendment just captures two different approaches to building a budget. I know the county executive said, you know, people have to dig into their pockets a little, a little deeper. And I think that that, that, that hurts families at the end of the day. Individually, I know these property taxes, Mr. Trembauer did a really great presentation with the townhouse and the single family and the mansion and what those impacts are. Those look small on paper, but it's the collective of inflation and taxes passed at the state level. So it's all of it. And, and residents in my district are feeling the pinch. So that's why I put my name on this amendment, and I stand by it.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I mean, everyone, speaking of hearing from the constituents, I'll say that I'm hearing overwhelmingly from my constituents that they want us to invest in our schools and public safety. They want our employees to be paid a competitive wage so that we can attract and attain the best talent. Inflation is impacting everyone. That includes all of our employees across the county. And so if we don't compensate them accordingly, they are going to be hurt even, even more so from this. We've got to understand that if we make a cut like this, we're going to have to make a cut to the budget of $45 million. So what are we going to take that from? Mr. Volkey's correct, we wouldn't be defunding the schools, but we would be taking away, that's the, almost the entire compensation package for the schools. So are we saying we're not going to give increases to our staff? We are mandated by the Blueprint for Education to do certain things, and this would, if we have to make significant cuts to that, we're going to be behind in all areas. It's, I can't think of 45 million from this budget that I would want to cut that is not benefiting our employees and also all of our constituents and all of the residents of the county as we expand services and provide the things that our people want and they need. So there's no way that I could support this kind of cut, because I think we would be harming our residents for modest gains, modest gains in people's personal pockets, massive harm to the county.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleague, Ms. Hummer, spoke very eloquently about the needs of this county. I want to remind not only the public, but, but my colleagues that, that the charter states that we assess and analyze the needs of the county and set the tax rate in order to fund it. We're one of the lowest, or the lowest, large taxed, large county. And it shows. It shows in the investment we make in county government and the fundamental role that county government plays out. I always appreciate these amendments from my colleagues. This is the fifth budget I've worked on. We have had a 3-4 vote on cuts of just over $500,000 to the operating side, and now two amendments that would cut the revenue side nearly 60 million. So while I appreciate, if these were to pass, that I trust my colleague was going to find 60 million in cuts, we wouldn't be funding public safety, we wouldn't be funding education. And so I'm glad he put out a petition asking his constituents to stop the tax. And so I'm glad he put out a petition asking his constituents to stop the tax and spend. He failed to tell his constituents what, how he would get to that sixty million dollar cut. And that's a failure in my mind. Nobody wants to pay more in taxes. Nobody does. Nobody wants to sit here and raise taxes. But find me the cuts and then bring me the rate. I'm a no.
Before I go to Mr. Volkey, I saw your light on.
Yeah, I just wanted to add another thought to this conversation. When we talk about inflation, those, again, this is, again, not to, I'm not trying to pit anyone against anyone, but it is a reality that those that are renters are much, much more impacted by inflation than those who are homeowners. This is not an example in Anarundel County. I wish I had some, although I guess actually I do have some. This is just one that rung very strongly in my head. I have a friend who lives in Rockville. Her rent is going up eight hundred dollars a month next year. And I've heard similar stories in Anarundel County where there are four and five hundred dollar per month increases. If you own your home, if you're lucky, it's paid off. Of course, that's, you know, not a lot of folks, but your mortgage payment doesn't change. And that is usually the biggest single piece of people's family budget, mortgage payments and car payments. And if you own your car, your car payment isn't changing. So we have to be realistic about, of course, inflation does impact everyone. You can't get away from it. You know, it impacts how much you pay for your groceries. It impacts how much you pay for a night out at dinner. But the burden of inflation is much, much higher on lower-income folks.
Mr. Volkey.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Chair.
Please, Ms. Fiedler.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. So just for the record for folks who are watching at home, our job here as the legislative body, the final fiscal authority, is to offer cuts. That's the only thing that this body can do. So while we're reviewing these and talking about these cuts, it is not unusual for council members to put up individual cuts. It is our job.
All right. Any signal additional lights? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment reduces the property tax rate to point nine five two dollars for property outside of the city of Annapolis and Highland Beach, point five six nine dollars for property within the city of Annapolis, and point five two two dollars for property within Highland Beach.
All right. Ms. Fiedler.
It's me. Me again. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're following along in your budget books, please feel free to turn to page forty-three, and we will have this discussion starting there. On page forty-three, it talks about what is known as the tax cap in Anarundel County. So the rates that are being proposed here are what are known as the tax cap rates. This is the ceiling on which voters, and I believe it was nineteen ninety-two, stated that the property tax should not exceed. Now, the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, determined that for jurisdictions like Anarundel County and others that are generally conservative and tax adverse, that they would create a mechanism that would allow local bodies like ourself to over, you know, disregard, go over, whatever you want to call it, the tax cap. We did this once five years ago in the first budget that the county executive proposed. We're doing it again this year, where we are going over the property tax cap. We are setting rates at point nine eight generally for the county when the tax cap would be point nine five two. This is a twenty-six million dollar increase in funding, which is what the county executive has used to build their budget. So we don't need to find sixty million dollars, it's actually fifty-seven, not sixty, and we don't need to find forty-three million. We don't even need to find the other fourteen. We just need to find twenty-six. And I can tell you that there are twenty-six million dollars worth of things that we could cut in this budget without having to cut teacher pay, without having to cut police officers, without having to cut firefighters. There are ways to do it. I'll be very blunt. I've had some conversations with my colleagues, and I don't know that people want to find those cuts. So candidly, it's not advantageous for me to ask the staff, put together all these cuts and come in and say, let's do blank, 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 to cut it. But I can tell you where they are. So for anyone who is concerned that we can't find a way to save this money in the budget, believe me, we can. But with that, again, standing up for the people, six hundred and eight-plus people who responded to the petition that I put out, and, you know, the people that I've continued to hear from with this budget and the concern that they have on the increase that this will have, this is in effect a compromise, right? The idea with this is to say, instead of going over the property tax cap, let's respect the will of the voters. Let's go to the number that they have authorized us to go to. Let's not take the number that the legislators in Annapolis in the General Assembly decided that can ignore the will of the voters and kind of go over and do that. And let's come up with a figure that allows us to live within our means, but also to respect the will of our voters. So that is the purpose of this amendment, and I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Is there a motion to adopt? A second?
Second.
Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trump, our budget officer. I thought for a second, when the sponsor started his explanation, that he was going to quote a Taylor Swift lyric. It sounded like you were going into anti-hero there, and I didn't figure you for a Swiftie, but there you go. So. Oh, come on. Anyway, you might think that this amendment is half the revenue that the previous one, so maybe I would oppose it half as much, but you'd be wrong. I would ask you, I would ask you to oppose this with the same amount of vigor that you voted the last one down. This would be a structural change to the budget. I appreciate the sponsor's perspective, and I appreciate how he led into what he's doing. But I just want to take a second and assure the council that we put together a very deliberate and thoughtful budget, and we didn't add twenty-six million dollars of fluff here or there. Like, this is a budget that meets a lot of the county needs. And specifically, the reason that the property tax is above the tax cap level this year is to fund the education budget. So that's where the extra funding is going. And we do that not lightly. We know that this is a big ask, but as the county executive did five years ago, this is a change that is needed. And although the rate is higher than the tax cap, it is still the lowest property tax in the region. It's the lowest property tax in the region. We're proud of that in Anarundel County. But I would ask the council, please reject this amendment. Let this budget go forth as it is. It's a great budget. We're going to make it even better tomorrow when we bring in some amendments to do the additional priorities that the council has requested. So please reject this amendment. Let's end our day on a good note, and we'll see you again tomorrow and make everybody happy.
Ms. Ledbetter.
I just wanted to, I thought my colleague's words were very well said, and I share the same sentiments. As such, I would like to be added to a sponsor to this.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. While I certainly understand the will of the voters from nineteen ninety-two, I would like to point out that there are one hundred and sixty-nine thousand additional residents in Anarundel County since nineteen ninety-two. So, and many of those folks presumably voted for our representatives in the General Assembly, who indeed put this, I would say, protection of our public schools to make sure that a tax cap doesn't disproportionately or unduly harm our public schools, and we're using it for exactly that. So once again, I'm on the opposite side of a vote for Mr. Volkey, which surprises no one.
Mr. Volkey.
I just want to add that I don't think that that was covert narcissism disguised as altruism, so I want to be clear, all right? All right? You knew that you could work that in there.
All right. Any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the negative, sorry, three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number two has been defeated.
All right, is there any other business to be brought before this county council at this time? All right. You have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until eleven AM tomorrow, May seventh, where we will meet